Welcome to the July 7, 2025 study session of the Livonia City Council. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance led by the Honorable Laura Toy.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This meeting sets the agenda for the 2021 regular meeting, which is a voting meeting that will take place on Monday, July 21, where tonight's items will be officially voted on. I'll make a note that we have one council absence. President McCullough is unable to be with us tonight. The audience or the council has set aside 30 minutes for audience communication for items not on tonight's agenda. Do we have any audience communication? Good evening.
Hello. Christopher Martin, great state of Michigan. I'm going to be voting no on the millage, as you can tell by the shirt that I have on. And one of the reasons for that is the library. Once again, over the holiday, recent one, I had to go over to the Redford Library on Saturday because they were open. Other libraries are open. I've mentioned this in the past. Why would I be in favor of knocking down a library, building a new one if it's not going to be open for my use or that of other residents and you have to go to a surrounding one? I mentioned this numerous times in the past. Also, the talking about the library, the latest thing, besides the elevator not working, there's only half the time when you press the button to open the doors. If you're in a wheelchair, you would have to have somebody hold them open for you because that button doesn't work. That automatically opens the doors, okay, over at the library for you to get in. Okay? The bathroom, we've talked about that for a while. It still isn't ADA approved. Last thing, Carrie was talking about her coffee hour. Last February, I'll mention this again, last February, I went to one of those, January and February of last year. February was the last one I went to, and I swore to myself I'd never waste my time again. And the reason for that is because I asked at that time, there was a trip and fall in front of the library to be ground down. It took over a year to have that done. So I have no faith that you'll be able to ever maintain a new building because you don't maintain the old buildings. And when you do mention something about it, it never gets done or rarely gets done. Also, as far as audience communication, there was a time when you could speak at the beginning and at the end of that very same meeting under audience communication. There was a time that that took place, and I was about the only one in here that would ever do that. Okay, audience communication now is a big event. Never used to be that way. But when Don Knapp Jr. was sitting over there, and we had a certain council members that didn't like what I was saying, that's why they tried to limit free speech, and that's why they eliminated speaking at both audience communications at the specific meetings, whether it be a study or a regular. You can only speak once now. And the reason for that is they didn't like what I said. So that was basically that I called it the Chris Martin Rule as far as eliminating free speech. Okay, but and be very careful, folks out there who you vote for, okay, on council.
Thank you. That's tight. Good evening.
Good evening. Steve King, Coventry Gardens. Over the weekend, I noticed signs up everywhere, signs, signs everywhere, a sign. And a lot of the big giant yes signs went up. And I just want to remind people in Livonia how I feel about this. If you vote yes, Livonia, you're actually voting no to the things that matter most. If you vote yes to the millage, you're voting no to the Civic Center Library, our community's intellectual and cultural heart being pushed into a landfill. If you vote yes, you're voting no to seniors on fixed incomes, many of whom can't afford yet another tax hike. If you vote yes, you're voting no to sustainability and green building practices. This plan ignores modern energy standards and locks us into outdated designs. If you vote yes, you're voting no to first responders who are being told to wait years before their critical infrastructure is addressed. If you vote yes, you're voting no to fiscal responsibility. This is a $200 million blank check with very little public oversight or spending controls. If you vote yes, you're voting no to transparency. The public wasn't consulted and priorities were set behind closed doors. If you vote yes, you're voting no to real priorities. Buildings, parks, roads, and basic services continue to be neglected while this massive project jumps the line. If you vote yes, you're voting no to families who are already struggling, especially younger families, and retirees hit hardest by inflation. If you vote yes, you're voting no to community input because once the money is approved, the voices of residents won't shape the outcome. Livonia deserves a better plan, not a rushed, overpriced deal with misplaced priorities. Vote no and send them back to the drawing board. Steve Johnson couldn't be here tonight, but he sent me a no. He said, I want to thank the city for sending a vote no message to every single resident. I'm thinking, what's he talking about? It's our tax bill. And I got mine, and it's the highest it's ever been. And I went to Carrie Martha's talk about the taxes, and she points out the city is 13 mills and it makes us low. My bill here is 31 and a half mills. And if this millage goes through, the Smart Millage passes, the Wright Museum passes, the renewal of the Public Safety Millage, we're looking at 40 mills. We got to get off this $12 a month because that is nonsense. And you continue to put it out there. Using your calculator, my taxes go up $500. Come on. Can you at least be honest about what you're trying to do? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do you have any other audience communication? Seeing none. Counsel. Okay, moving on. Let's move into the study agenda. Oh, that's right. Thank you. We're actually, I need to make one quick announcement. We're going to pull item number 15, and that is going to be moved from the July 21 study. So item number 15 will be removed from tonight's agenda and moved to the July 21 study. Thank you, Mr. Donavich, for reminding me of that. All right, we're going to start with item number one, which is a block party brought to us by Russ Fassione to be held Saturday, August 2, 2025, from 1:00 to 9:00 p.m. on Arden Street between Elmira Street and Plymouth Road. Do we have the petitioner? Come on up.
Madam Vice President, that's an awesome t-shirt he's wearing right there.
Yeah, so we're, thank you, Russ Fassione, Arden Street. We're proposing a block party for the neighbors in our area of Rosedale to celebrate the 100th birthday of our neighborhood. I know we had a more formal neighborhood-wide one, but in our area of the neighborhood, we just want to have something for our block. We're hoping to be able to get that for the afternoon for all the kids and things like that in the neighborhood.
Thank you. Counsel. Mr. Morgan.
I'd like to offer an approving on consent.
All right, you have an approving on consent, so your item is all but assured to pass.
Thank you.
We'll vote out it in two weeks. Thank you. Item number two, block party brought to us from Ray Franges and Jim Rumel to be held Friday, August 8, 2025, from noon to 10:00 p.m. on Brentwood Street between Jacklin Drive and Muddell Arc Street with a rain date of Sunday, August 9, 2025. Is the petitioner here?
Madam President.
Mr. Donavich.
I'll offer an approving for the regular and give time to our council manager, Sarah Casper to be able to reach out to the resident. Make sure they attend the next regular meeting, please.
Thank you. So we have a approving on the regular for item number two. Any one from the audience? No. All right, number three, a block party, Christina Ziole to be held Saturday, August 9, 2025, from 11:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. on Summer Street between Riverside Drive and Ashurt Street. Is the petitioner present?
Madam Vice President.
Mr. Donavich.
I'll offer approving similar to item number two for the regular to give time to Sarah Casper, our council manager, to reach the petitioner and make sure that this petition also attends the next council meeting before the vote happens. Thank you.
Thank you. I see no other comments. All right, item number four, block party. We'll see, we'll get this one. Alex Quint to be held Saturday, September 6, 2025, from 3:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. between 9912 and 10,000 Fairfield Street. Oh, there we go. Welcome. Name and address, please.
Alex Quint, my address, 11401 Fairfield. And yeah, we're looking forward to having our third annual block party. 80s theme this year. We'll have a snow cone truck, bounce house, all the bells and whistles. So it should be a fun time.
80s theme, that sounds fun. Counsel.
I'd like to offer approving on consent.
All right, we have an approving on consent from Mrs. Sheil. That means your item is all but assured to pass in two weeks. You're welcome to hang out with us, but you don't have to.
Awesome. Thank you much.
Thank you. Have a great time. All right, number five, block party from Tracy Nolte to be held Saturday, September 6, 2025, from 4:00 to 10:00 p.m. on Marie Street and Court between Nelson Street and Minton Avenue with a rain date of Saturday, September 13, 2025.
Madam Chair.
Is the petitioner here? Councilmember Toy.
Madam Chair, they've been doing this block party for quite a number of years. I would offer an approving, but if we want to hold it as we have with others, that's fine, too. But for now, if we could, move it along, that'd be great.
So approving on consent on regular?
Regular.
Any other comments from council, audience? All right, there's approving on consent for item number five. All right, item number six, this is a waiver petition. This comes to us from the Planning Commission regarding petition 2025-05-02-10 submitted by Tizio Architects requesting waiver use approval to build an addition to the existing veterinary hospital at 27492 Five Mile Road located on the northeast corner of Five Mile Road and Folk Street into the southeast corner of Section 13.
Madam Chair, I just want to go back to number five. Was that on regular?
It was on consent.
It's on consent, even though they're not here. We're making the other two come on regular.
That's okay. Regular's fine, either one.
I have it as regular. I believe the motion.
Okay. So just to clarify, we'll put number five on the regular.
Thank you.
For consistency. Thank you. All right, back to number six. Were you going to that as well, Mrs. Sheil, or no?
Nope.
Okay. Just making sure. Do we have the petitioner here for number six?
Bonjour, Tizio. Nice to see everybody again.
Welcome.
We would appreciate your vote on this one. If you recall, I was here a little over a year ago with the first time we met around with the veterinary hospital. The good news is that they're doing very well, and they need to expand their services. So they were, they've kind of sort of fell into buying the building next door. As you know, the owner unfortunately died, and they were able to buy it from the family. So what we've done is we've added a, I think about a six-foot by three-foot-nine passageway between the two buildings. Everything will still go through the existing building through the front lobby. And the back area in the building is going to be used for expanded services, grooming, et cetera. And they're very happy. We have plenty of parking, so that's not an issue. One thing that I don't believe is on the drawing, maybe my fault, is that the current sign there, I think it's a real estate 21 sign, that whole thing will be coming down, and we'll be putting landscaping on it in its place.
Mr. Terramina, I'm actually going to go to Mr. Terramina first and let him jump in there if you have anything to add.
No, just to, again, recap, the owner of the existing veterinary hospital at 27488 Five Mile Road, something you approved in 2022, bought the adjacent property. This was a former firearms dealer, was the last document of that building. They want to expand the waiver, the veterinary clinic, which requires the waiver approval. This will add about 1,700 square feet to the facility, bringing it up to just under 5,000 square feet total. The addition is very small, 23 square feet. Parking will be increased. Before, there were only about eight or nine spaces. Now there's going to be 25 parking spaces. No significant changes, no additional signage. The addition is going to match the existing veterinary clinic in terms of the brick and the metal cap. So Planning Commission is recommending approval of the project.
All right, thank you. Now, Councilmember Toy.
Thank you very much. If I may to the petitioner, Mr. Tizio. Mr. Tizio, is there one vet in that facility?
Yes, there is one veterinary. There'll be additional staff. I think two people will be in the expanded building.
Okay. There's not going to be any overnight accommodations then?
Correct. No overnight.
Okay. I, my dog was neutered there, full disclosure. And I just want to say how clean and very, very good staff there, very personable people. It was just amazing because I've been to a couple of different vets, and they're a quality group over there. And I'm going to offer an approving on this, if I may, Madam Chair, because my experience there was nothing but positive, and I had gotten a rescue, and they recommended I go there. And in my rescue fee, that included the neutering and everything. So the experience was very good, and they keep up their property nice, too. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is that going to be on consent or regular?
I'll say consent, okay? My colleagues think consent would be fine, so thank you.
Councilmember Donavich.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Good evening, sir, and thanks for all the work you do in Livonia. You do a lot of quality work. So what are you doing with the pavement? That's existing pavement. There's like four or five parking spots in front of the building to the east. That's staying?
That's, although it's staying, one of the things that we are doing is that we are eliminating, I think, three parking spots near the driveway at the side street because they interfere with the flow of the traffic. So we are removing some just to make it safer. And if I could add to a point, the veterinarian that bought and operated the building, he worked for, excuse me, a mill. And he actually quit because he wasn't given proper care to the animals, and he wanted to open up his own business. He did. And the neighbors are thrilled with it. I don't know if you saw the commentary from the neighbor directly behind it. He was just thrilled at this, like you were, with the service that the veterinarian is providing for the pets. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Now with this added, you know, the additional square footage, what are you doing for trash removal?
It is, it'll be in the building. There's an existing garage in the building we're expanding to, and that'll be moved out and picked up by the trash when it's called for. So there'll be no outside trash, to answer your question.
Okay, Mr. Tizio. And then that space in between the two buildings, you're adding some sort of metal paneling to kind of closing that space so it's not, it's not available to the naked eye?
No, what we're doing is we're, it's brick to match. It's a steel frame. It's a flat roof, so we are going to be draining onto the existing building to the east. So it shouldn't even look like an addition. It'll be recessed back, made out and be noticeable from the roadway.
Okay, thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else from council? Anyone else from the audience? All right, you have an approving on consent.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Toy, we're getting a notification here. Mike's not picking up. So just make sure you're. All right, this brings us to item number seven. This is a site plan petition from, this will be from the Planning Commissioner regarding petition 2025-05-08-06 submitted by Rich Naaman requesting site plan approval to construct a 4,164-square-foot warehouse garage at the Six Mid Plaza at 29441 Six Mile Road located in the northeast quarter of Section 14. Mr. Terramina.
Thank you. As you indicated, the Six Mid Plaza is located on the south side of Six Mile. It's just west of Middle Belt Road. The property is zoned C2 general business. This is a request to build a 4,200-square-foot accessory garage on the property. So immediately to the west of the property is the Beth El Baptist Church, which is zoned RUF. All of the other surrounding properties are zoned commercial. The irregular-shaped parcel is just over an acre in size. It has 120 feet of frontage on Six Mile and a depth of roughly 290 feet. You'll see from, well, the aerial is probably the best to show this, but the plaza is shown here on the west side. It's about 8100 square feet. There's roughly 20 parking spaces in front of the building, another 70 spaces in the rear. The building, the accessory garage will be placed at the rear of the property. This plan may be a little difficult to read, but the property is highlighted. Here's the existing retail plaza, and the building that we're reviewing this evening is shown here at the back of the property. The garage would measure 30 feet by 140 feet. It would be placed roughly 10 feet from the side property line and 10 feet from the rear property line. There is a provision in the ordinance that says that any building adjacent to a residential district has to be located 20 feet from the property line. So this building is non-conforming with respect to the setback along the west side. So it would either have to be modified to show that 20-foot setback, or variance would need to be granted by the zoning Board of Appeals. The, there's another requirement for accessory structures in a C2 district. They cannot occupy more than 25% of the lot area. In this case, it occupies roughly 9%. So it conforms in that respect. The number of parking spaces at the rear of the property would be reduced from 70 to roughly 35, but still ample parking is provided for the businesses that are located within the plaza, which includes a nail salon and a bridal shop. There's currently a six-foot-high vinyl fence in poor condition that runs along the west side of the property. Technically, that's required to be a masonry wall. There are utility poles that run through that area. And the fact that there's a fence and not a wall really stems from the fact that in 2020, with the adoption of the Livonia Vision 21 zoning ordinance, the zoning of the adjacent property, the adjacent church property, went from parking to RUF. So that created the nonconformity. But nonetheless, there is that six-foot-high fence. I don't know whether the commercial property owns that fence or whether the church owns that fence, but it is in poor condition. The building itself would be constructed predominantly of block. You can see it has a flat roof and overall height of roughly 17 feet. There's four garage doors shown on the front of the building, each with entry doors adjacent to it for the four different units, each of which would be a little over 1,000 square feet. The Planning Commission approval does require that repairs be made to the parking lot, that there be a dumpster enclosure, that there are, there would be restrictions on the use of the garage. A lighting plan would have to be submitted, additional departmental review for the building color, and then improvements to the existing monument sign. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Counsel. Councilmember Donavich.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Mr. Terramina, looking at this new data, thank you for submitting that over to council, this data in general. Where is that dumpster enclosure? I was looking on the plan. I don't see it.
It's not shown. That is a condition of the approval, but has not been reflected in any revised plans.
Okay. I'm assuming that's the petition right there.
Good evening. Name and address, please.
Good evening. Rich Neiman, and I'm from Six Mid Plaza.
Thank you.
Through the chair, good evening, sir. Thanks for being here this evening. Similar question that I asked our planning director, where is the dumpster enclosure going to be?
The dumpster enclosure, we went over it with Jacob from Planning Department, and we are looking at putting it in the, where you have the offset of the property over there, that little skinny area in the back over there. And that's, yeah, right there. We're thinking about putting it over there.
So that be, do you have existing dumpsters for those two buildings, three, three buildings right there?
No, right now, all the trash is picked up on the street. So we have the trash service basically on every Thursday. It's picked up.
And I wonder.
We have the new trash bins, you know.
Yeah, the fancy ones. Yeah, sure, sure. No, it is a main road. I appreciate you, sir. I know you're trying to solve an issue here. But, you know, they're, you know, it's a main road, and getting our garbage trucks to stop in a main road, if we can minimize that, that'd be helpful to the community and traffic flow. And, you know, adding a dumpster enclosure, I think, would solve some issues. I do wonder if that's a great location. Can the truck make that turn? But I'm going to let, let you guys, you guys have already talked it over, so I appreciate that. And then the two questions I have, who owns that existing vinyl fence? And then who owns those parking blocks that separate your property line and 1691, 911 Middle Belt? The existing parking blocks?
The fence was constructed by the church. So the church owns the fence. And parking blocks, which one are you talking about?
On the, it would be the southeast property line?
Yeah, that's basically, over the years, the teacher store put some in, we put some in. So literally, at this point, nobody, we work on it together, me and Chris, who owns the flooring store right now. We basically go every two, three months and straighten them out and put them together because cars always come over, try to cut through, and they go over those, and they break them. And we've actually had a car that lost its transmission over there, you know.
Yeah, no, that's, that's why I bring it up, because I went and visited the site, and it looks pretty rough back there. And now you're asking us to put a building back there, which I want to help. It sounds like from some of the conversations with planning, you want to kind of enclose some of that stuff put inside the building, get it out of the line of sight for our residents.
Correct.
You know, I think it'd be some goodwill if you fix that fence, or someone fixed that fence. But it sounds like you're saying it's not your fence, and the parking blocks, you know, some are yours, some are your neighbors. So it's hard for me to make a decision here. We're, you know, we're giving you, you know, this big, beautiful building, and we're trying to clean up our neighborhoods and clean up some of this area.
I'm actually building the building. If you're going to give it to me, then it will help if you can contribute some dollars right there.
Well, my contribution will be to vote yes on this, and I think it'd be a good contribution to clean some of that area up.
We're going to do a little grain area over there, okay, in that corner. So that, we're going to put grass and some bushes over there and everything. And we can do a curb, actually, a concrete curb. And, but then, again, that will not stop cars from coming over, you know. At the end of the day, part of that building is going to take about, with the setback, it will be about 40 foot from stopping cars from coming over, basically. It will reduce that a lot.
34.7.
I'm sorry?
34.7, I believe.
Well, with the setback from the back, then you'll be over 40.
Forty, 44.
So that, that will cut down a lot on that area, you know. So it'll be skinnier. And then, like I said, we could, we could do a concrete curb over there. That's not a problem, you know.
Okay. Thank you, sir. That's my question for now. Madam Vice President.
Okay. Counsel. Counsel, do I have direction? Councilmember Morgan.
I don't know. I would offer an approving on regular.
Okay, you have an approving on the regular? That means we'll, you'll want to come back in two weeks at the July 21.
Well, that, I have a question real quick regarding, you know, the things that Councilman Donavich had recommended, that'll show on our plan for next time around. We'd like to see that, where everything is going. If you're going to put some parking blocks or if you're putting a curb in there, they do make them higher, so cars can't really get through them, which would probably solve a little bit of your problem there. But that, it looks like you're trying to clean the area up, and I like that. It's a, that's a good spot, kind of out of the way. And hopefully, that doesn't become a junkyard back there.
No, absolutely not. In fact, we're trying to get rid of a lot of this stuff. And then we have tenants that need a lot more storage. You know, we have the balloon lady, what we call her, the balloon lady. It's the celebration station. She's, since Party Supply Store, whatever it's called, Party City, went out of business. So her business increased. She's, needs more storage. The, a t-shirt place went in the back over there, and they need storage. And so half of it is going to be for the tenants, and the other half, it's going to be for our equipment to go in there, so.
Very well. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Councilmember Toy.
Thank you. If I may to the petitioner.
Sure.
Thank you. Mr. Naaman, is it? Mr. Naaman, then, what is your role in all this? Are you're just going to build it and?
I'm the owner and contractor.
Oh, okay. So lucky you.
I don't know if it's luck. Sometimes it's a double whammy.
Yes, sir. Mr. Terramina mentioned the concrete wall, and I know those are, those are expensive and a lot to do. But what kind of solution would you come up, other than the wall, or if I'm not seeing that in the plan?
On what site? What side of the site are you talking about? What side of the site are you talking about?
The west, I believe it is, isn't it? Yeah.
Existing vinyl?
Yeah.
Okay.
What, what, were you, did you have any plans for that at all, or?
No, the vinyl, we were gonna talk to the church and, because they own it.
Yes.
And we were gonna see if they wanted us to repair some of the areas where it got busted, and, you know, from over the years with the vinyl, it gets brittle from the cold and stuff like that, and I'm sure the plowing doesn't help pushing the snow against it, so we were, we will talk to the pastor over there and see if we can fix it, you know, if they want us to fix it, or they fix it themselves, you know, that, whatever. We're willing to work on that.
Yeah, and you'll have it by our next meeting, pretty much, you think?
I'm sorry?
By the next meeting, sir, you'll have it? Some kind of agreement with them or shared, whatever?
I'll talk, yeah, I mean, if you want us to talk to them, we can talk to them, sure.
Be helpful, a lot, you know, because I think that's a big concern, if you will, or a large concern. Okay, well, much success to you and thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Councilmember Donavich.
Thanks, Madam Vice President. Just commentary, you know, most cities always had the masonry wall requirement, and I think council and with planning, not to put words in anyone's mouth, but they got away from masonry walls because petitioners always said they were too expensive to build, too expensive to maintain. And now, we're trying to work with the development community, so we changed our standards, we were getting away from masonry walls, and now we're asking for vinyl fence walls. And now, we're getting pushed back, so we don't want to put vinyl walls, because someone owns it, someone doesn't own it. If we ask the church, I wonder what their response is gonna be, so it just, you know, we have standards and we loosened our standards to help the development community, which is a good thing. And then, now, you know, we're still not enforcing those standards and, you know, cosmetic repairs and whatnot, so, just my two cents. Thank you, Council Vice President.
Thank you. Anyone else from council? Anyone from the audience? All right, so you have an approving on the regular, so we will be voting on this on July twenty-first. Probably recommend that you come back with some of the answers to some of the questions posed, and we'll see you then.
Okay. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Moving on to item number eight, this is a request for authorization to lease one twenty-twenty-five Ford E four fifty Champion Challenger CH four passenger bus through the state of Michigan bid process. This comes to us from the Department of Housing for transporting senior citizen, senior center, excuse me, participants to events and activities with funds budgeted from the Community Development Block Grant Program.
Hello, Kate Whiting with the Livonia Housing Commission. We are seeking approval to enter a five-year lease through the state of Michigan bid process to lease a passenger bus for senior center participants to take them to and from activities. This lease cost would be a five-year lease with yearly payments of twenty-eight thousand four hundred and sixty-eight dollars and forty cents.
Madam Chair.
Uh, Councilmember Toy.
Uh, thank you. If I may to Kate, is it? Okay, Kate. How many people does that fit?
This is a twelve-passenger bus, eight regular seats and four spots for wheelchair accessibility.
Oh, good, so it does handle people that have some challenges.
Yes.
Okay. Madam Chair, do you know what color it is? No, I'm teasing.
It's white, I believe.
It's okay. I'm gonna offer an approving, as long as it has a large boombox in it. No, I'm teasing, but in all seriousness, thank you for doing this. Our seniors need to keep active and I'll be probably using it next year. Thank you.
Did you want that on consent?
Sure.
On the consent?
Yeah.
Anyone else from council?
Yes, I have.
Anyone from the, uh, Mr. Morgan, go ahead.
I have a question for you regarding this. Why did we decide to lease this instead of purchase it? What was the cost of the purchase versus the lease?
So I can't tell you the cost of the purchase, because under CD, CDBG, Community Development Lot Grant Procurement Policies, we can't purchase a vehicle, we can only lease, so that's what the intention was here. So it's a five-year lease, CDBG cannot purchase vehicles.
Okay. All right, I didn't know that, but okay, thank you for bringing that to my attention.
Thank you.
Uh, Councilmember Donavich.
Thanks, Madam Vice President. Thank you for being here this evening. So twenty-eight thousand four sixty-eight per year.
Yes, sir.
Over five years is one forty, one hundred and forty-two thousand, and that comes from CDBG funds, so not from the general operating fund. That comes from federal grant dollars.
Correct.
Great, thank you very much. Thanks, Madam Vice President.
All right, thank you. Anyone else from council? Anyone from the audience? All right, well, you have an approving on consent. Good job coming before us, and it's all but assured to pass.
Thank you.
Thank you. Number nine, this is also an award of bid. This comes to us from the Department of Parks and Recreation regarding remediation services at the Alexander Blue House at Greenmead Historical Park from budgeted funds. Mr. Davis.
Thank you, Council President, Vice President Ted Davis, representing Parks and Recreation. We're looking to do a little interior restoration work at the Greenmead Historical Park, specifically the Alexander Blue House. We're asking the council award to the low bid, anytime restoration services. This would come from the historical trust and capital outlay minor. I'm happy to answer any questions council may have on this.
I have a question.
Counsel, uh, Councilmember Sheil.
Thank you. Have we used this company before?
We have not. We've checked references, the references were positive. We feel comfortable right now with awarding this bid to the low bidder, low qualified bidder on this project.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Uh, Councilmember Toy.
I will offer an approving on consent.
All right, we have an approving on consent. Anyone else from council? Anyone from the audience? You have two minutes. You know the drill.
It's all right, it'll be quick. Denise Micah, Lake Shore, I was just curious, how much is it and what is the job for the remediation that's gonna be done?
Thank you. Mr. Davis?
The low bid was twenty-nine thousand four hundred dollars, and this is for mold removal, drywall removal, insulation removal, and repair of the interior of the Alexander Blue House, specifically on the second floor where we have offices.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, you have an approving on consent.
Thank you.
Moving on to item number ten, this is an award of bid. This also comes to us from the Department of Parks and Rec. The replacement of the medium in the sand filters at the Jack E Kirksey Recreation Center for the leisure pool and spa from budgeted funds. Mr. Davis?
Thank you, Council Vice President. Again, we are asking council to award this project to the low bidder, Bear Zini Contracting LLC, in the amount of thirty-eight thousand seven hundred and seventy-nine dollars and fifty-five cents. This sounds really fancy, it is simply removing the sand out of the sand filters and replacing it, we're actually putting in a different medium this time. This is a glass medium, it's supposed to last a little longer, and that's, there's a slight increase in cost in this, but we think this will be well worth it. Last time we replaced this was two thousand seventeen. Seven to ten years is pretty normal, we're hoping to get fifteen years out of it with a medium change, so I'm happy to answer any questions council might have on this project.
Councilmember Morgan.
Yes, I'd like to offer an approving on consent.
Okay, you have an approving on consent. Councilmember Donavich.
Thanks, Madam Vice President. Mr. Davis, so when you tell the council that operating and maintaining pools is expensive, this is one of those examples.
This is a, this is a low-cost example, actually. I mean, we were able, thanks to DPW and the Water Department, they're gonna do some work in-house with a Vector truck to actually remove the sand, and then contractors replacing it. This is a, this is a good deal for us, this is a low-cost expense. Remar setting pools, staffing pools, those are expensive things. Buying chlorine every day and, and, you know, CO2 to balance chemicals, those are big expenses. Thirty-nine thousand dollars every seven to ten years, and we're hoping to push this to fifteen, that's a low-cost expense for us.
Yeah, I was having a sidebar with one of the council members here earlier, and we were talking about how private pools are having a difficult time maintaining private pools with their costs that they deal with from private membership, and they have more flexibility to raise prices, you know, as their membership sees fit, I guess, whereas us, as a government municipal body, trying to have all these pools, you know, it's, it's, it costs a lot of money, clearly, and I feel like we're always getting expenditure for pools in our community, but thank you, sir, for the work you guys do. Thanks, Madam Vice President.
Thank you. Anyone else from council? Councilmember Petzenski.
I'm just curious of timing for this, you know, is it gonna fit into the current repair that's being done with the pool, or will it...
So, we are assuming, obviously, council approval on this, on consent would be lovely, but approving this on the July twenty-first meeting, and we'd ask for a non-veto immediately after that meeting on Tuesday morning. We usually, mayor's office is pretty good and turns those around quickly. I would assume they'd be ready to begin work on the twenty-second in the afternoon to the twenty-third at the latest.
Do we need to request that?
No, the department typically requests that.
All right, anyone else from council? Anyone from the audience? All right, you have an approving on consent, Mr. Davis.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, item number eleven, this is a request to consider the proposed name for the new senior facility, also from the Department of Parks and Rec, the naming of the new senior facility as the Livonia Senior Wellness Center. Mr. Davis?
Thank you, Council Vice President. We have, we are preparing the nuts and bolts of a new building opening up, and one of the things we need to do is prepare signage for said new building. So, this is one of these things that the Parks and Recreation Commission had a discussion about. We have been, you know, referring to this in our printed in media and our social media posts as the Livonia Senior Wellness Center. We felt, the commission felt comfortable with that, so that's what we're bringing forward to the council is the name of the Livonia, as the Livonia Senior Wellness Center. Council could do this via resolution or an ordinance change, but the criteria we had set up before was that these facilities or Parks and Recreation amenities would be first, go to the Parks and Recreation Commission and then go to city council. We're following that procedure here. So I'm happy to answer any questions council might have on this. Again, we're gearing up for that late September, early October, you know, getting, getting everything ready here, and we're, that's what we're trying to do with this, so.
Thank you. Councilmember Sheil.
I'd like to make a motion for the new senior wellness center to be called Livonia Senior Wellness Center. Do we want that on regular or consent?
I've got a question.
Yeah.
You're okay with on hold?
Yeah, I can wait.
Um, Councilmember Donavich.
Madam Vice President, the city attorney, are we doing, to Mr. Davis's point, are we asking for an ordinance amendment? What is the procedural step here?
Typically, when we're naming buildings, we do name them via ordinance.
Yeah.
So, but, but we can have both a resolutions certifying that that's what the council intends the building to be called, and then also bring an ordinance as a separate item, and we'll, we'll have one prepared accordingly.
Because I don't want to hold up planning and, and, you know, everything, so it'd be nice if, to your point, maybe concurrently in some, in some respect, so we follow traditions and norms and procedures, but also get the ball rolling with the non-veto letter, so whether that be you come back before us. I don't know, whatever.
Because we're smelling like we have to do a first read.
Yeah, whatever mechanism that is, is best for, for everybody, I just, I don't want to hold up progress.
Sure, from a timing perspective, I think it makes sense to offer this resolution separately, and we will also bring for a first read at the next meeting, and ordinance certifying this. The ordinance is more technical matter, it includes a legal description and things of that nature, so we'll have both prepared.
That'd be great, thank you, sir.
So, can this go on consent then, or does it need to be on regular, the resolution?
The resolution can go on consent, and we'll offer a separate first read for the ordinance.
Okay, thank you. So I'll offer it on consent.
Okay, so we're on consent. So in other words, like, the resolution is basically to go, go ahead and make the sign, the ordinance will make the official naming, once it's passed?
Correct, and our, and our ordinance is usually just to memorialize the naming in, in sort of perpetuity, that's, that's how we typically do this.
Okay. You're on consent?
Thank you very much. Have a great night.
Thank you. All right, moving on to item number twelve, this is an award of bid. This comes to us from our Department of Public Works regarding the generator replacement at fire stations three and six, and the DPW building maintenance building thirteen, as a part of the generator replacement program from budgeted funds. Good evening.
Good evening, Council, Don Roerf, DPW. As you mentioned, we're before you tonight to push forward with our generator replacement at three buildings, two fire stations and one building maintenance building. Originally, these were slotted to be done and replaced last year, but when we went out to bid, the bids were way higher than anything we had estimated, so we're back before you now to look to get these three generators replaced in these two, two fire stations and the one building maintenance building. I can go through some details here for you if you'd like. Bids were put out on mitten, we've had five companies. After careful review, it was determined that the award of the project would go to the lowest bidder, which was American Generators. And again, like I was saying, we're, we're just trying to phase in some of these generators at these buildings and these sites to replace the old ones and make sure that they are powered up.
Thank you. Councilmember Morgan.
Uh, yes, I, I would like to know, how old are the generators that are currently at these facilities?
Um, all of them are in excess of fifteen-plus year, twenty years, to my knowledge. I don't have the exact dates for, for all three of these, I could definitely get that to you, but they're, they're well beyond their use, and if I'm not mistaken, a few of them at the fire departments do not power the whole building and the new ones will.
Okay.
And the building, sorry, the building maintenance building is the one that operates all the HVAC and the software for all, controlling all the HVAC in the building, so that's an important one to have on there as well.
So what you're requesting is this nine-hundred-and-eighty-nine thousand and some change, and this will outfit stations three, six, and the maintenance building, number thirteen, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. All right, I will offer a approving on consent.
All right, you have an approving on consent. Councilmember Donavich.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Thanks, Mr. Roerf, for being here. So Fire Station Three is roughly two-hundred-and-seventy-two thousand dollars for the generator. Fire Station Six is roughly three-hundred-and-eighty-five thousand dollars for the generator, and the DPW building is, auxiliary building is roughly three-hundred-and-thirty-five thousand dollars for the generator.
Correct.
Yeah, awesome, thank you, sir. Thank you, Madam Vice President.
Councilmember Morgan.
Yeah, one quick question. Those are the old generators that are coming out of there, what do we do with them? Do we take them to auction? Do we make any money off them, or do they just go to the junk scrap pile?
No, no, no. Actually, what we do is, if there are other generators that are, you know, in line to be replaced, we make sure that there's any parts or anything that are salvageable off of those. If there's nothing that's gonna, you know, work and match up that way, then we would auction these off as, you know, on a mitten or any, or that type of thing, to see if we can generate any money from them.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone from the audience? All right, thank you, you are on consent with that one. Let's go to item number thirteen, this is an award of contract, comes to us from the Department of Public Works, Water and Sewer Department. This is regarding sewer line chemical root control services in an annual amount not to exceed one-hundred thousand dollars for a period of three years with the option of a two-year extension from budgeted funds. Mr. Roerf.
Thank you. As I'm sure most of you know, we've, we've been dealing with root control in our sewer systems for years and years, and we've always been contracted with Dukes Root Control. They do a fabulous job for us. It's a foaming chemical that is approved by the U.S. EPA. We do approximately eighteen thousand feet of sewer lining, or I'm sorry, sewer root controlling a year. So we did place this on mitten, and we did get the one bid back, and we have a warranty built into that for six months and a guarantee that roots will not be growing back within[1693.25] And we, we have a warranty built into that for six months, and a guarantee that roots will not be growing back within that time. If they are, they'll be retreated for free. Um, bids were opened in May of twenty twenty-five, as I said, with one bid being received from Duke's. Um, and again, they've been performing our root control in the city for as long as I've been here. Um, and they do a fabulous job, and they've always provided high-quality service, so um, we are looking for council to execute a three-year contract with an option for a two-year extension between the city of Livonia and Duke's um, in an annual amount not to exceed a hundred thousand dollars. And having been that there was only one qualifying bid, uh, authorize the expenditure and in the funds that would be supplied through the water and sewer budget.
Madam Chair.
Uh, councilmember Toy.
Thank you. Um, I would like to offer an approving, as, uh, the director has said, we've used them for a long time without any issues or problems or whatever, so, um, I would put this on consent with no problem. If the rest of the colleagues don't have a problem with that.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Anyone else from council? Anyone from the audience? All right, you are on consent, Mr. Rohrath. All right, let's go to item number fourteen. This is also an award of contract from the Department of Public Works regarding parking, athletic, and streetlight electrical maintenance and general electrical maintenance at all city buildings and facilities for the period of June first, twenty twenty-five, through May thirty-first of twenty twenty-eight from budgeted funds.
Thank you. Uh, again, a bid was put out for electrical services for the city, as you mentioned. Um, we did request a four-year period. We received three bids. Uh, lowest bid coming in was from Great Lakes Power and Lighting. Um, again, this is our contractor that we use with the city to help out with any electrical needs that we may have. Um, so the department is requesting council to authorize an agreement with Great Lakes Power and Lighting for the period of June first, twenty twenty-five, through May thirty-first of twenty twenty-eight to provide electrical services, um, not to exceed three hundred thousand dollars annually from budgeted funds.
Counsel. Mr. Donavick.
Thanks, Madam President. Mr. Rohrath, thanks for being here. Looking at the packet, we're approving roughly not to exceed three hundred thousand dollars a year, correct?
That's correct.
But then it talks about i- if they're not able to essentially complete that work, then RCI would do the remainder?
Yeah, so I, I can add that in if you'd like. Um, in the event that they were unable to fulfill their contract, um, DPW will be looking for the authority to award it to the second lowest bidder, which would be RCI.
But RCI's, uh, portion of the money would come out of that not to exceed three hundred thousand?
Correct.
Okay, thank you, sir. Thanks, Madam President.
Uh, anyone else from council? Council, do I have direction? Mr. Morgan.
Yeah, I just have one. Uh, I have another quick question here. Is this, what type electrical are they doing? Are they doing a major electrical, or are they just running around the buildings replacing light bulbs and, uh, do, you know, doing some we're putting in plugs, things like that? What, what is their scope?
Their, their scope is anything that we need, but the, the bulb changing and that type of stuff we do in-house, these are for major, you know, rewiring of a parking lot if something goes wrong there, um, putting in new panels, if that's, you know, whatever needs to be done on a larger scale, that's what this contract is for.
So they supply as many people as we need to get whatever job we need done?
That's correct.
Okay, I'll, I'll offer an approving on consent. Thank you.
All right, you have an approving on consent. Anyone else from council? Audience? All right, you are all set, Mr. Rohrath. Uh, just a reminder, we pulled item fifteen, and that has been moved to the July twenty-first study, so we're gonna move on to item number sixteen. This is a request to waive the formal bidding process and extend contract with Havner Tech from the Department of Public Works for the completion of all repair work required in connection with catch basin, storm sewer, and concrete slab stabilization in the amount not to exceed one hundred thousand dollars annually from budgeted funds.
Thank you. I think we're about halfway there.
We're getting there.
Um, as you know, the city is responsible to repair and maintain over twenty-six thousand catch basins and other storm structures, uh, within our community. Um, DPW's been working with Havner Tech over the last five years, um, and they've repaired over three hundred road catch basins for us currently. Um, their process is very quick, it's trenchless, um, they're in and out of there really quick. Um, we've been really impressed with their capabilities and their service to perform other services as well. They've actually helped maintain a couple of the bridges at the golf courses by using their product there to solidify a lot of the things that go on there, large storm culverts, and then, as you mentioned, some concrete slab stabilizations. Um, Havner Tech has agreed to provide a five-year extension through this, through twenty twenty-nine of their current pricing. Um, and that's all attached in your packet. The funding for this contract is budgeted within the Road Maintenance Fund, and the Department of Public Works is requesting a not-to-exceed amount of a hundred thousand per year to make necessary repairs to the infrastructure system improvements. We would like council to award a five-year contract extension to Havner Tech for an amount not to exceed the hundred thousand annually, and secondly, waive the formal bidding process in accordance uh, with the section three point zero four point one four zero point D point four, uh, since no advantage would, to the city would result from competitive bidding.
Madam Chair. Uh, councilmember Sheil.
I'd like to.
Faster.
I'd like to offer an approving on consent.
All right, approving on consent. Uh, anyone else from council? Anyone from the audience? All right, another approving on consent. You're doing well, Mr. Rohrath. Uh, number seventeen, request for additional appropriation. This also comes from the Department of Public Works regarding the unexpected trimming and removal of trees resulting from increased tree trimming requests and section trimming in twenty twenty-five from the Forestry Fund.
Did I miss a TV timeout or anything?
Yeah, no, you're good. You're doing well.
All right, thank you. Uh, in January of twenty twenty-five, council approved funding for the right-of-way, um, section tree trimming, emergency response, and emergency removal program for the full twenty twenty-five season. Um, the storm of last summer really put a, a burden on our programs and tree trimming and things of that. It greatly increased our number of tree trimming and removals. Um, this increased the number of requests that were coming in from citizens and increased the sections that we needed to go back over and pre-trim. Um, so there was a huge delay as a result of those storms from last year, which obviously, you know, is gonna, is costing us more money to be able to get that done. So what we're looking for today is to increase this contract by a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Uh, it's budgeted within the current forestry budget, um, and we're asking council to approve the increase to the contract with sod solutions by a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for emergency tree trimming from budgeted funds.
I have a question.
Uh, councilmember Sheil.
Thank you. So, Mr. Rohrath, is, we're increasing the budget, but is the company we're going with gonna be able to keep up with the amount of service that needs to be done, or should we be looking at adding an additional company?
No, we did have that conversation with them to ask what the, the capacity was, if they had the bandwidth to be able to come in and do that. And the timing of it with this year right now, where they've had other contracts, they're finishing up with those, they said that should not be a problem.
Okay. Uh, councilmember Potenski.
So this is for emergency tree trimming only, so, like, relate, storm-related? Or, for instance, earlier this evening, we had, you know, a resident, uh, concerned with their neighborhood, um, up Bad Break Street, getting their trees trimmed, like, is this to help with overall capacity or just special circumstance?
No, this is, you know, when we go into, for example, section twelve, and we trim that whole section, that's part of this, an emergency removal after a storm, that's part of this. Um, anything that we would be doing, you know, going through, answering requests from residents on, in a different section, if it's just, uh, you know, oddball, outlier, or something, all of that's covered in this. It's not specific to just emergency.
Thank you.
Councilmember Donavick.
Go ahead. Thank you, Madam Vice President. Thanks, Mr. Rohrath. So there are roughly, approximately three hundred and fifty open tree requests that we know of right now.
At least.
At least.
Probably ten more came in while we've been.
Yeah, probably. So there's two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that was allocated for tree branch cutting, and now we want to increase that budget to four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars.
That's correct.
How long does it take you to go through that four hundred and twenty-five thousand? Is one year, two years, three years?
Hopefully, we get through it in a year.
Okay.
I mean, that, that means we're making progress and catching up, and, and, again, as we go through, weather-dependent.
Yeah.
Right, so I, I wish I could give you a straightforward answer with a drop-dead date, but I'm not sure that would be, uh, accurate.
So are we using, I think it's sod solutions and boon development, or AKA sod solutions, or?
Sod solutions.
Okay, so when do they want to get started on, if, if this contract is approved, when can they get started?
They're, they're in the city as we speak, so they're working off of that original amount, and we know we're gonna be short, that's why we're trying to get here and get this going.
Yeah, and I appreciate that for saying, it just, it's, again, shocking, you know, four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to cut people's trees in the right-of-way, and, and we hear it all the time, people complain all the time, I want my trees trimmed, we heard it earlier today, I want my trees trimmed, there's dead branches in my right-of-way tree, and it just, uh, the reality of spending four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in, in roughly a year, hopefully, to, to trim trees, is a lot of taxpayer dollars. Do they help us manage those requests? Do we have to spend man-made hours, our own city employees to manage and, and pull all these requests? Are they gonna do that for us in the back end?
No, so that would run through City Works program, we would initiate the work orders, and, again, we, we assign them a section.
Yeah.
Right, we try to get through the city in a timely manner, we'll, we'll assign them a section, they'll start tree trimming in that area. If there comes, uh, a big emergency, like a tree has been hit with lightning or something to that effect, where they would have to go do a, an emergency repair or removal, then we would pull them off and we would let them know. But we manage all of the complaints that come in, and where, where they get dispersed to.
City staff manages the plan, puts together the, the strategic layout, the routes of everything, and they just go out and do the work?
Correct.
It's a lot of work. Great job to your team. I, I don't, I don't know if people understand, three hundred and fifty open requests as it is right now, on top of everything else DPW does, uh, it's a, it's a lot of work. Thank you, Madam Vice President.
Thank you. Councilmember Toy.
Thank you very much, uh, to Mr. Rohrath. If I may, um, Mr. Rohrath, I, I got a large lot here in Livonia, um, that I live on and would like to sell it right now. No, um, but I just had a bunch of trees repaired that I hadn't done in two years, and I'll tell you, it's expensive to do when you have a private company as well, and, um, but they chopped up everything. But I just gotta, once again, commend you guys, 'cause, um, about two weeks ago, I'm, like, in my kitchen, it's early morning, and all of a sudden, I hear this buzzing, buzzing going off, and I'm thinking, now what are my neighbors doing? 'Cause we got a lot of trees and things there. The DPW was out there, and they were only out there less than forty-eight hours. I mean, it's amazing how quickly you guys are working it, and I never called or said anything, and they came through and, um, got it done. I mean, it just, kudos to whoever you have looking at things, and I have more out there now, but I'm just saying, as we clean up our yards on, you know, during a holiday, some people go boating, we clean up yards lately. So, um, I just want to say what an excellent job, you know, is being done by your department, and I wanna.
I will relay that info.
Please do, and, um, and I want to offer an approving on consent, if we haven't already had that from all of us. Um, because, and again, thank you so much for everything you guys are doing. Appreciate it.
Councilmember Morgan.
Yeah, I, I would just, uh, I just want to get your opinion on something, because we, we, uh, changed something last year in the, the city ordinance and that, regarding the trees that were on, uh, the right-of-way and things like that. Would you say, in your opinion, that, uh, the requests have went up or doubled since we've done that? Or the costs are more to the city than they would have been if we would have just left things alone?
That's a two-part question. I'll answer the second part first. Yes, so costs have gone up. Um, and I think, just in the nature of looking at the community, the age of the trees that we have in the right-aways, I think that's just gonna continually increase, to, as trees get older and more mature, they, they tend to have a little bit more work needs to be done with them. So that's why this trimming program is extremely important, to stop hangers and broken branches of, um, you know, Amazon trucks or whoever that are rolling down streets, but I would say yes for sure to your second part, your second question, and, and yes, not so much on the first one, but it has increased.
Okay.
The number of requests.
I'm not gonna ask for a percentage or nothing.
I don't know that. I'm not even gonna pretend.
I just wanted to kind of get a, a general idea, because I knew that change would, is gonna cost the city more.
Yes.
And, you know, a lot of people like to handle it on their own, and, uh, so.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you. All right, you have an approving on consent for the trees. All right, number eighteen, this is a request for authorization to purchase one twenty twenty-five Ford F-150 Supercab XL four-by-four pickup truck through the state of Michigan and Macomb County bid process. This also comes to us from Public Works Division for use by the water supervisor from budgeted funds. Mr. Rohrath.
Thank you. As you mentioned, we are looking for a twenty twenty-five Ford F-150, um, through the state of Michigan and Macomb County contract with Signature Ford. Um, they were awarded that contract. The upfitting for this vehicle will be performed by Truck and Trailer, who also got the bid through the Rochester Hills contract, so everything has been bid through the, the state on this. Um, this purchase will not increase the size of the fleet. Um, a comparable unit will be getting dispersed through the public auction process. Um, DPW respectfully requests the approval to purchase this twenty twenty-five Ford F-150, uh, as you mentioned, for the use of our water department supervisor through the state of Michigan procurement process at a cost of forty-six thousand four hundred and twenty-four with Signature Ford for the truck and upfitting to the vehicle by Truck and Trailer, um, through Rochester Hills for a cost of eighteen thousand four hundred and twenty-five dollars. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Uh, councilmember Morgan.
Uh, yeah, I'd like to offer an approving on consent.
Anyone else from council? Anyone from the audience? All right, another approving on consent. Let's see if you can bet a thousand. Number nineteen, request for authorization to purchase and outfit one Freightliner MT-55 Step Van through the Sourcewell Purchasing Consortium, Department of Public Works regarding to replace the current frontline water repair truck from budgeted funds.
Thank you. Uh, Department Works is requesting this Step Van, I like to call them water meter repair trucks, but Step Van is officially what they're called. Uh, this purchase will be made through Sourcewell. Uh, Sourcewell has identified Wolverine Freightliner for the trucks. Upfitting, uh, again, will be performed with Truck and Trailer Specialties. Um, this truck will not increase the fleet. Uh, it will currently be replacing an eleven-year-old truck that will be sold off on auction. Um, this is, as you mentioned, a frontline vehicle that's used in, in the water department for all the water main breaks that we deal with, along with anything else that's water-related with hydrants or valves or anything else that we're doing. Um, so we're looking for council to approve this purchase of the new Step Van through Sourcewell, um, and Wolverine Freightliner at the discounted price of two hundred and ninety-one thousand six hundred and ninety-three dollars, and also for the upfitting through Truck and Trailer, uh, for a total of one ninety, one hundred and ninety-eight thousand two hundred and seventy dollars. And I would be happy to answer any questions you may have.
All right, thank you. Counsel.
I'll offer an approving on consent.
So you have an approving on consent from, uh, councilmember Sheil. Anyone else from council? Anyone from the audience? All right, Mr. Rohrath, I think you're done.
Thank you for your time.
For hanging with us. All right.
Have a good evening.
It's gonna be a hard show to follow there, uh, Mr. Lear, but we'll, we'll do it, right? Item number twenty, this is a request to accept stormwater facilities ma- maintenance agreement. This comes to us from the Engineering Division regarding the Adams Park Development LLC in conjunction with the construction of a storm drain system that provides adequate for the Linden Park Site condominium in the southeast corner of section twenty-four. Mr. Lear.
Uh, sure. Uh, so this is a more of a lesser record-keeping, uh, item for finishing up a site development, uh, from the Linden Park. Uh, we require the developer to, uh, enter into a stormwater maintenance agreement with us so that, uh, if they fail to maintain their stormwater, we have to go in and fix it. They are still liable for reimbursing us for costs on it. Uh, standard agreements that we do with all new developments, and just looking for approval to, uh, sign the agreement and get one step farther on this development.
All right, thank you. Counsel. Mr. Morgan.
Yeah, I'll offer an approval on consent.
All right, you have an approval on consent. Anyone else from council? Anyone from the audience? All right. Um, that concludes the study agenda. Is there any audience communication that is not on the agenda?
Madam Chair, after you go to audience, I just wanted to say something.
Well, I see none from the audience, so any closing remarks from council? Councilmember Toy.
Thank you very much. I, I meant to do this earlier. Um, Livonia Police Department put out a little bit of an alert, and I don't know if any of you are getting these calls about golf carts in neighborhoods and wherever they choose to go. Um, and they wanted to remind us that the operation of golf carts on public roads or sidewalks is strictly prohibited within our city. Um, while golf carts may seem like a convenient way to get around a neighborhood, they are not legal use on Livonia streets or sidewalks. Our officers will take enforcement action against violations, and this is a civil infraction and carries a fine of a hundred dollars. So keep our community safe by keeping golf carts off the streets and sidewalks. Let's all enjoy our summer responsibly, and that's yours truly, Livonia Police Department. Not that I represent them, I'm just sharing information, 'cause a, a lot of neighborhoods have them, and we just want to make residents aware.
Thank you. Anyone else from council? All right, sing. All right, good night, Livonia.
Good job.
Good job, Murta. Not a fun job.